The February 24th of 2012 work session. And we're continuing with our compensation benefits manual and employee practice manual. Take it away. I think we left on personal leave.
I think what I'd like to do is let's go back to the first part and then you show adjustments on maybe our last one. Also, now I want to put it in the context that we're only due to pay leave. So we start on page, part one, page one. And I just want you to make a good margin of this that on 1.3.1, I still need to discuss the actual job titles with the controllers and make sure I have that correct.
I'm sorry, can you give us that number again?
1.3.1.
Okay.
Do your definitions?
Yes.
I need to update on that. We were reading the credit files. On the next page, part two, page one, over this compensation. Up on 2.1.1, you'll see in that line on rate of pay, I put in hyphen, including any longevity increments hyphen. And the reason for that is that, again, the practice has been passed to follow the Unit Two for your administrative clerical employee, follow the Unit One for your public works administrative employees. And those two labor contracts do have longevity increments. So I added that between the hyphens. Down on 2.2.3, again, there, I need to double check on the actual, excuse me, I misspoke, I said that. 2.2.2, on the titles that are determined to be as a them. Also down on 2.2.4, so you note that we made that change, that holidays, vacation leave and jury duty will be included in compensation of overtime, but the so-called, as I refer to it, wage insurance leave of a sick person, we will put not be included. On the next page, part two, page two, again, I need to check carefully on when paychecks will be issued around the black day following the end of the two-week pay period. As we discussed, the controller does not recommend that people be paid before the title has been verified, so we need to establish some sort of lag. I need to talk to your controller's office on how brief that lag could be. It's not uncommon for there to be a full week lag, like you experience in the private sector, but I know a lot of public sector units, as long as the payroll's in by Monday, they can use it if the checks out by Wednesday or Thursday. So I just need to find out what's left, just to create the shortest time periods available. Then that puts us over into part three, which is the pay leave. On 3.1.1, you'll note there right away, the proposition effective January 1, 2013. And the proposal here from you is to go to 12 full days from the 14 full days and the two half days. And you'll notice that Columbus Day is to remain a holiday. The day, the half-day on New Year's Eve is gone altogether, Christmas Eve is now a holiday. This is what we discussed the last time we were together. On vacation leave, 3.2. Here's where, based on our conversations, this implements the accrual system. And it accrues, as we discussed, and like City of Newark's been doing for, I think we're in the third decade of doing it this way, the accrual system on a pay period-to-pay period basis. So this has the increments based on 80 hours, 120 hours, 160 hours, and 200 hours of paid leave. And it breaks it up on a 40-hour work week and a 35-hour work week. And there's no significant change in all of this. We did move the start of the third week to the fourth year. And that was in the previous proposal. Goes back from over a year ago. And also, anybody who is hired after January 1st of 2002 would never go to this weekend vacation. So the maximum, so if you're 10 years, if you're 10 years away from getting that income and you're still good, if you're less than 10 years away from getting that increment, you will not go to this weekend. Again, that's a cutoff time for 10 years that we were talking about a year ago, and we did not really dwell on that the last time we were together. Do you want to focus on that just for a moment?
Sure.
Okay. So what this is, the previous board had asked that the proposals come in with some reduction in the benefits. And we had discussed that you have a cograde of employees, current employees, that expect when they get to their 20th year of service that they get the fifth weekend vacation. And the discussion that we had, and this goes back over a year ago, was, well, okay, if you're within 10 years of receiving that, that I'm a 10-year employee, or I'm a 12-year employee, or a 15-year employee, I still have the expectation that I'm going to get that fifth week when I get to my 20th year. But if I'm only a nine-year employee, or an eight-year employee, well, that's a lot that's future. And I will no longer have that benefit. So that 2002 date that's sitting there, the cutoff date, is an arbitrary date.
I wasn't involved in that discussion last year. Can you give me the logic behind, the sort of thinking behind the change? Is that something that's been done?
Again, I think that most employers in the public sector are looking at the magnitude of the amount of paid leave now for two reasons. One, relative to the private sector, there is quite a bit of paid leave. You can justify that because years ago, we've been hearing this years ago, and for a long time, the pay was low, but the benefit package was attractive. Of course, these days you say, well, pay's comparable. If you look at studies, the pay is comparable to the private sector, yet the benefit package is still the old package. And again, we've been using this argument for 10, 12 years, and actually that argument has worked out. So one of the reasons is to bring the leave package more into compliance or compatibility, I should say, with the private sector. The other is, is that many of municipalities have been downsizing through attrition of labels, and you do still have quite a bit of work to do, if not more. And as you know, if I'm giving somebody 47 days a week, excuse me, 47 days a year off, that's quite a bit of time off, especially if I have 10 employees, that's now 470 days that I'm paying people not to work for me. You need to get that down, so that you can get more work done. So one is to bring it down so that it's comparable to the private sector, the other is that how do you get more work done with your cograde employees that you have remaining? Now, I'm just going to be a little bit glib here, it drives the point, this is part of the lecture I'm giving. A municipality was looking at their justice department, and they had three clerks. Two of them were working so-called full-time, one was working half-time. One of the full-time clerks was working 30 hours, his grandfather had full-time benefits. The other one was working 35 hours. They were both rather senior and were getting roughly 48 days per year of paid leave. So their vacation, their sick, their personal all the holidays. And the new town supervisor was looking at, well, maybe we could actually get this job done with three half-time clerks, and not have this two and a half, and have them work more staggered shifts based on having one person in during the business hours to keep the office open and process some of the paperwork back and forth with the state. And then the other two work with the judges on court nights, so that they're scheduled to be appropriate to what actually is going on in court, which should be, of course, quite a bit different than what we go with in the separate town clerk times. And so the town supervisor goes back to the justices, and the justices said, I can't get by with part-time work. I can't, we can't get it done. And the town supervisor said, well, you are. Take your 32 and your 35-hour person and subtract out all the paid leave, and they're only working 22 and 24 hours a week each on average. You are getting it done with part-time labor, you're just paying full-time benefits for your part-time labor. So don't tell me you can't get it done and start working 24 hours, because you are getting it done with part-time labor. So this starts to put us in perspective. Now, again, there's reasons, there's very understandable reasons, which you already get, on why you have full-time employee benefits. That is your core group of employees. But when you have so much leave, you start looking after what am I getting from my money? And is it relative to what's going on in the private sector? Does it meet your operational needs, does it stay within sector budgets? And so, long-winded on this one, Howard, but the previous board said, come in with some proposals where you're bringing that down. And so what happened on the holidays, of course, you can address that. Now, what's happening on the vacation is you have to go to your fourth year before you pick up your third week. And then at the start, or again, not so much for Westchester County, but statewide in the public sector, the typical threshold for your third week is your seventh. So usually, you're getting your two weeks vacation during the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 year. At the start, or somewhere around your seventh year, you go to your third full week of vacation. And around your 12th year, you go to your fourth week of vacation. Now, you can see here that you start with two weeks vacation by the new year beginning. And you do get your fourth week of vacation at the 12th year. But even you moving from two years to four years for your third week, you're still, I guess, more generous than what we'd be with '07. Now, when you get to that fifth week, the fifth week has been around, but it's going away. And it's usually being phased out either for all new employees, or some employees that are still years away from getting it. And that's where we came up with this arbitrary, if you're 10 years away or more, you won't get it. But if you're within 10 years, you can still count on getting it. Now, you can move that to where it says 2007. So it can be a different cutoff, whether you think it's appropriate. And again, the accrual system, this is the standard practice. It's been the practice for all employees of the State Department of Labor and all public authorities for a good number of years. And we find that it's much more user-friendly for the employee, and it actually makes it easier for scheduling purposes. And you'll see down on 3.2.4, that at no time can you carry around more than what it'd be the equivalent of four weeks vacation. And then there's that escape clause, that for no fault of your own, can't take it, there's a rollover period. Where you can be, I should call it rollover, there's a grace period where you can be over your cap for a certain period of time.
And how much would that go over?
Well, depending on how much you're earning. So let's say I'm a senior employee, and, you know, I just realized I have a typo here. Let me correct my typo. You see the 35-hour column? I changed the 70 to 105, to 140, and 175, but I did change the hourly equivalents. I'll fix that next time around. But let's say I'm a 10-year employee, and I'm earning 6.15 hours for pay period. And because of staffing reasons, or whatever might be happening, there's, we're doing assessments, or it's tax time. And I haven't kept my bank below that one, in that case, the 140-hour mark. And I can't get a vacation for the next four weeks. Well, I'm going to go over by 12.3 hours. So it says that if you're unable to take the vacation, with no fault of the employee, you may carry the excess for 90 calendar days. Again, that 90 is an arbitrary number for the same, but within three months, you shouldn't really take yourself down over your cap.
Sure.
But again, you're hitting your cap with your paper, so you better be careful.
And then if you don't use it, or what happens?
Yeah, you'd be zeroed back down to 140.
Wait, I'm getting this sentence right. So can you carry over?
You know, again, I hate to use the word carry over, Mike, because carry over is a word we use when we're using a front-load and a back-load system, where you get the whole bulk in the external things. Under the accrual system, December 31st is no different than February 24th. It's just another date on the calendar. So you're accruing every paper. And what happens is that I can't have more than the equivalent of four weeks in my pocket at any one time. Now, things happen sometimes where you're, you, so another example of no fault of your own by using my lecture on this, is me and Mrs., we have a cruise, an ocean cruise off of Alaska. And the week before we're getting ready to go, the cruise ship says, well, I don't want to go on vacation now. So no fault of my own, I'm not going to be able to use my vacation, and I'm up to my 160 hours, being a 40-hour week employee. Well, okay, I'm going to have a grace period where I'm not going to lose my, my new accruals, because I'm at my cap, and the grace period is not in place. It rarely happens, but it does happen. And this is just the escape, so that's something that's not a loss. And again, we're going to target review in a moment, when we get back to work on this, the PTO for your high comps. And typically, it's your high comps that really don't use their vacation all the time. It's all in the costs. Scheduling and termination, that hasn't changed simply because of the accrual system. Now, on sick leave. Here, you didn't make any significant changes from the last time we were together, from where the board was previously. But the trigger date is March 1, 2012. So anybody who's hired before March 1, 2012, they earn one day per month. Now, the concession on the current practice is, and that's in the consultant's note, it goes to 15 days per year if you have a bank of 75 days. That goes away. No matter what your bank is, you're going to get one day per month. So this is an accrual system, just like your vacation, except for it's monthly instead of pay period to pay period. Now, if you're hired after March 1, 2012, also known as new employees, it's now six hours per month if you're a 40-hour employee, five hours a month if you're a 35-hour employee. Again, that, those are the same increments that we had from the work sessions with the previous board. The only difference is the implementation base. On 3.3.3, and then this is new from the last work session, we are capping your accruals at the 165 days. And again, that 165 days is based on the amount that you can use for your 41J retirement tax credit. Pension credit, I'm going to say, not tax credit. So 3.3.3 is from our last work session. On the next page, part three, page five. Just to note a change, that family sick leave now is basically unlimited, as long as it's for your immediate family and for direct care, where there used to be a cap of 12 days per year. And the consultant recommended that that's really, not a best practice, that you should liberalize that more for your employees, if you have a sick child, you have a sick child. No other changes. Come right down to 3.310, just so we know that as with the previous discussions, there is no cash redemption for unused sick leave, no more term of employment. It's only applicable to your 41J. And again, I want to stress that 41J is very beneficial if you had your time. If you only had 130 days, let's say, that would add percentage point to your calculations on your retirement credit. So if I'm a $60,000 a year employee, and I got that extra percentage point, that's $600 a year. And I might say, whoa, I saved 130 days of sick leave, I'm getting $600 a year. But if I live for 20 years, that's $12,000. So you're still getting something of value. And also, that $12,000 is not subject to federal experience, the $12,000 is not subject to state taxes. So it's not subject to federal taxes.
So for retirement credit, did you remove that?
No, it's still there. On 3.39.
Obviously, I'm going to see this.
You have 41J now, but the thing is, is you can't double dip. And most people that are getting 50% value, they're going to take the cash and run, even with the tax liability on it.
So this reads that there still is retirement credit for sick days at a lower number of days?
No, no, it said the state allowable. You take 165 days towards your 41J, that's always allowable by the state. Now, what you were doing as a past practice is that you can get cash redemption for 250 days. Now, it's dependent on how many years of service that you had. And in the cheat sheet that I gave you, the summary, it has the graduated amounts, I forget what it is, but it's, it was only 30% if you had, I think, 10 years of service.
250% for 20 plus.
Yeah.
10 to 15.
So somebody could have 250 days on the books, and they would be paid whole pay for 25 of them. That all goes away. But now, you're never allowed to apply your cash payout in your 41J. You can't have a double dip, the controller will allow that. Are you using it for a cash out, or are you using it for 41J? You choose. Well, 50% payout, most people are going to say, even with me being taxed at 30 some percent, I'm still going to pick the money. And it goes further than that sometimes. Now, if you sit down with a national planner, or if a national planner would say, take a second look at this, you can really spread that out over 20, 25 years of retirement if you're 41J, and some of that is protected against tax liability. You might want to take another look at taking that cash upfront and paying 30% tax income. But most employees, they look at a shot of money like that and they'll take it. Probably shouldn't, again, if you're part of the tax register, you might get different advice.
So if there's an employee who's accumulated a significant amount of days now, and this goes into effect, how does that affect that directly?
Everything that's in excess of 165 goes over into that sick leave.
Okay. And everything below 165?
Is theirs. But what, oh, no, okay. Let's go back to your question, I don't know if I answered it correctly. Let's say that right now, somebody had 240 days of sick leave on the books. When you pass this policy, they will drop down to 165, and all those days that are on the books will go into the sick leave bank. Now, they continue with 165.
Or the difference between 165 and 240?
Or whatever it is.
Whatever, whatever it is, would go to the bank.
Yeah. So it's kind of lost, and it's not lost.
If there is a catastrophic illness that could be used.
If there's a person, yeah, it goes right in the bank. So now, let's go back. So I have an employee who's at the 165-day cap at the time of the leave applying for retirement purposes. That then goes into their calculations before they enter the state. And they can pick certain.
Now, what's the 41J calculation that's different from what we use now, which is the number times 0.5, and whatever calculation we do, does that relate?
What you do is you have a cash sum on unused sick leave. 41J is just the state saying, what you do as employer, all the employers are in, and most of them are, you pay 2 tenths of 1% of payroll every pay period to the state. And so supposedly, they have a big cash in money there. And what they do is with all that incremental payment that you made in, 2 tenths of 1%, when you have an employee who now retires, and they have 165 days, or 100 days, whatever, they get out their formula, divide it by 260, you get a percent amount, you back down onto your retirement formula, and that converts into extra dollars in pension. So that's why I use the simple analysis, I have 130 days. 130 days divided by 260, and 260 is divided, is calculated 52 weeks times 5 days, 260. So one year. So 130 divided by 260 is 0.5. By 20-plus years of service, multiply it on the pension, it's 2%. So 2% times 0.5, it's 1 percentage point, times my final annual salary, that's cost $60,000. 1% of $60,000, $600. Every year, I'll have $600 more on my pension check than I otherwise would have. And again, when we look at that in perspective, can we teach myself, you go $600 a year for 130 days that I saved up? I should have got the sick law on. But in reality, you live 20 years, that's all.
It's not that.
So there's still something there, but it's all being managed by you paying 2 tenths of 1% of payroll into this retirement 41J. And for pleche, you have 3 41J. Here's the comparable for that system. And so it's actually, it's a good benefit. And where this comes from is that the old practice of paying people for not using their sick leave has been phased out over the years. In fact, most places phased it out 10, 15 years ago. Some of them still have it, some of them still have it at 100%. You work 50, 30, or whatever, not much. But this gets rid of that. And again, it does get rid of it as far as having no value, it just converts it from cash being paid by your taxpayer for that unused sick leave into this fund that you've been paying to inhabit. You've been paying into the 41J fund for quite a few years, have you? I don't know, when you started 41J, it's been in your late contracts a lot.
I think it's an item that I'd like to further look at specifically, Howard, only because you've got, we've got a small university of employees, a small university, this might affect, that have been here a long time. And I'm the first one to say that sick time, you know, especially in the private sector, sick time should not be accumulated and paid for.
Right.
You're not going to get an argument from me on that. However, I do think we have to show a little courtesy to people that have been here that have accumulated it. And we know that going forward, we want this to happen, but we're small enough where we can look at individuals and say, how is this going to impact them directly? And is there some fairness factor where we can stop now, and whatever's accumulated, perhaps there's a separate formula, and everything that goes forward is under this? I just think we should, at least I'd like to take a look at that to see. Because we're not dealing with 1,000 or 2,000 employees, we're dealing with a handful of this is no effect. And I'm all for changing it going forward, and I think this makes sense, but I'd like to at least look at how this is going to affect certain of our good employees, all employees are good, certain of our employees to, because they have been accumulating this, and they understood it to be that this payout is going to be there. Again, I'm not a proponent of the payout. We need to change it, but let's just look at who this is going to affect and how it affects them.
Well, there may be important ones that have been not taking sick days in anticipation of getting a good payout. So we may have to think about doing a phased-in timeframe like we had in the. Well, I must say, collective bargaining, where this can't be done unallowably, we often do have to have a certain cograde of a grandfather. Now, they often get grandfathered in different ways. The example that pops into my mind right away is where it was 100% payout of whatever non-sick leave that you had. And so the municipality, through collective bargaining, came in and said, well, okay, those of you that are going to retire in the next five years, we'll give you a 75% payout. Those of you that are going to retire in the next seven years, we'll give you, and they graduated down. But usually, within somewhere around the 10-year phase, you say, no, that's, the future's now a long ways away. Don't tell me you were counting on it, because, you know, you could have had a hip replacement in that period of time, and had no sick leave. So I'm not going to.
And I think that's, that's reasonable. You know, certainly for anybody who started tomorrow, this is the, wait, I mean, we know in the private sector, you have a certain number of sick days if you don't use them, they're gone, they disappear.
Well, as we say, why do you have sick leave? Sick leave is there as wage insurance. A bad thing happens to you, you still have to make your weekly pay, we're going to give you sick leave insurance. It's the employer self-insuring against it. And you've heard me argue on this before, that where vacation leave is really an entitlement for compensation, I'm going to pay you a couple of weeks to go out and have the insurance, three weeks, four weeks, but sick leave, even personally, that doesn't belong to the employee, it belongs to the employer, and the employer's saying, I'm going to keep it whole. So why does it have a redemption value? And we use that as a bad example, that if the end of the year, I don't have a car accident, my insurance company doesn't send me a check, nor do I go out and have an accident on the last day. It's just, it's gone. And I consider myself to be lucky. But yet, we don't treat sick leave that way. We don't say, oh gee, I'm lucky that I didn't have a catastrophic illness this year.
And I think everybody up here, and Steve included, is likely would agree with you 100%. It shouldn't be, there shouldn't be redemption to it. All I'm saying is, for people that have operated and worked under this system, I just think we need to pay attention, because we're small enough to look at what that is, and is there a way to make this fair? Maybe it's limited by date, maybe it's 10 years in, whatever it is. And you know going forward, the new system has changed, but is there something that captures what happened in the past?
So there's a couple, two, three ways of approaching that. One way. One way is, I mean, first of all, you need to do your census, and you're right, with the non-union employees, your census is very small. And so we take a look at those employees that you have and see who's got accruals. And if you find that nobody's up in the, above one-hundred-and-sixty-five, I've just met this policy. If you have a couple of people that are sitting up there at two-hundred, I know you recently had a retiree of a non-union employee, and they're on the payout. So, so let's, let's take a look at those who have accruals now, if nobody's over one-hundred-and-sixty-five, I would go ahead with this. If you have somebody over one-hundred-and-sixty-five, you could look at phased-out payout, because remember, what you're doing right now, you're taking sick leave that was earned yesteryear, and you're cashing it out at a higher level, whatever your raises are.
But that's what that point five also takes care of, because when you multiply by, by point five, that's basically taking the average of their salary of their lifetime.
I don't think that's how it's calculated, point five is not a thirty-one.
Oh, well, that was, it sounded like a, that's the way you do it.
Well, let's do it.
You would just, you would just do it in half, and that would give you your average for your, when you first started versus when you ended.
No, because you do it at twenty years, you do it fifteen years, you do it ten years. If you have just that one-hundred-and-twenty-five, which is half, times a, let's call it thirty dollars of your salary for this group, times an eight-hour day, that's a thirty thousand dollar payout that you have. So if somebody has their two-forty, there'll be thirty thousand dollars going out the door. Now, if they were to apply that same amount of money to their forty-one J, of course, that number's gonna be more than ten thousand dollars. So they could say, hey, I got twenty thousand dollars going away, but also, go ahead and tax that, you don't have twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
You only use a third of that, like that's nine, you had fourteen thousand. Fourteen thousand's still a lot of lost money, when you're thinking that way. So, again, I, I would just do a quick analysis and see what the liability is. If you only have one or two people out there, rather than grandfathering, you might just determine a cash out over the next three years.
And I, again, I agree with you, it's, it's money, and maybe there's somewhere in between where we do, we owe it to the employees to at least do the analysis, and maybe there's a hybrid approach where we determine what it is and what the numbers are, maybe there's a choice. Maybe an employee would say, I'd rather defer to retirement and not get a loss sum. I just think we need to, we owe it to employees to look at where they are now.
They can't defer anything over one-hundred-and-sixty-five, state position, that's one-hundred-and-sixty-five state.
Right. But if there was, you know, if we came up with a hybrid where certain, there's a small number of people that fall into this category that have accrued, then we, then maybe there's a choice, and it may be, well, maybe you wanna throw it to the retirement versus taking a loss sum.
Well, the way I look at this is, I'm just so pleased that we're actually looking at this book and going through these items, because last year was only two votes, I've let this book stay open. So now, we have the book open and we're going through these, and if there's some adjustments that we're gonna make to make fairness to the current employees, great, we'll look at that. And going forward, we have our new employees coming in, they know what the deal is, you work here, this is what the deal is, if you want the job, you know, this is our policy. But previously, this book was shuttled for two years, so we're really pleased that we're getting through this now and making decisions, and we'll be fair with it. So I'm happy with that.
And to do a census of the current, so the patrol has those numbers?
Well, I would have to work with her, because she wouldn't have all of the, the numbers of the, you mean, those who are non-union, union employees, manager.
Now, I don't, I think I have the number. When we did this back when, in November of two thousand and ten, there was a head count of around eleven, but I know that head count has gone down, and I also know that even those that, those positions that were replaced are required to retire east. So, do you know what our actual head count is now for this unit? Not counting elected?
Which unit?
None, this group.
Not counting, not counting elected myself and tax receiver.
And justices.
And the justices.
Of course, you're the tax receiver, I don't mean beneficially, but, I mean, you don't, I say beneficially, they don't have sick leave because they're elected. But what's our, what's our count?
Uh, I would say it's six. This is the old list, so leaving out who's retired or left.
Yeah, I've read some more since the second page.
Oh. We're, we're counting like the new assessor in the list. Right.
There's eight total. Now, out of those eight, how many were hired since January of two thousand and eleven? Whether it's past January, January eleven.
Um, well, and, oh, we're not counting, we're not counting supervisors and elected officials.
No, but, but for example, the, the person who's hired.
So Sue Snyder, right, so the education superintendent, the assessor, and the.
Is that three? I think it's five.
Controller. Controller.
So out of the eight, only three have been around, so it's, so the census of who we have to shelter on a grandfather condition or a buyout condition would be small.
So I mean.
Okay. Then, turning the page, three point four, this is the group sick leave that we talked about. Now, in essence, this is the policy that we put before the police unit four years ago, and they said, no thanks, and they just left it the way it is. So unless you wanna go into great detail on this right now, because we have a lot of other work to go through, and to make this viable, we're going to have to get the union employees to buy in. Sheila Tyler is aware of this policy, she likes this policy, but she still has to bring her people along, right? So she's on board with it as being a good policy. But what it does, three, four, one sets up the administration, and what it is, is there would be one employee from each of the three bargaining units, excluding police, because they don't wanna come in on us. And there would be two non-union employee employees, so there'd be a committee of five. The initial membership is that you have to sign up in this month of April. Now, again, that's a flexible date, this is here for administration purposes. The eligible date for new hires is that you have thirty days, within thirty days of completion of your first year of employment, you have to decide, that's your open window for coming in. There's also an open enrollment period every January, much like you have for health insurance. There's an initial investment, and I throw out these numbers in bold, that there'd be an initial investment of forty hours, that'd be transferred from your own accruals to the bank. Subsequent investments, that every time the bank fell below two-hundred hours, it would be replenished with a donation of sixteen by, by, and I liken that to, if you lived in a condo association and you needed to put in a new roof, you'd have your special assessment, give your special assessment. The maintenance of membership is, for some reason, you don't have sixteen hours, because you've had a catastrophic illness yourself, you are actually suspended from the bank until you have your accruals where you can make your special assessment. And a qualifying event, as we said, this makes it easy, it's a qualifying event, it's defined by the federal family medical leave act.
How hard is this to administer?
We have found, and, and, I personally have administered this bank at Mary's College, and also at Bachelor College, and we found it extremely easy to administer, because you are a member, you have a need, it's defined by the family medical leave act, and there's a whole procedure, even on three, four, nine, on how you draw your, draw your.
Do you have some software? You looked up this?
No, I don't, it's just been done, it's.
Spreading.
Yeah. And so this, this, again, we may wanna sit down and have a focused work session on this, and I, I'm a little bit shy about going too far into this, because I'd really like to bring Sheila Tyler on this, because she, again, she looked at this, we sent this to her last, there was a woman in Unit Two, we, we have a memorandum agreement that allows the passing of a half, but the understanding parties were going to actually put together a sick leave bank. And at that time, I sent this to Sheila, and she was okay with it. But again, we haven't concluded the process. Personally, this has a reduction across the board, and it's immediate, where right now, there are five days that are front loaded on January first. Oh, by the way, personally, it is usually a front loaded benefit. So again, where we have a sick leave is accrued month to month, which is common practice. Vacation leave will be accrued paycheck, payroll period, payroll period, which is the common practice for state employees. And personally, is a front loaded benefit. And the reason for that is, is that you don't know when people are gonna have their personal business that they have to take care of, so you're just front loaded. And usually, there's no accrual or rollover. Your practice has been to give five days on January first, and they have the ability to be rolling some of those days over. And what happens now is that this, under this policy, it would be equivalent of three days, so twenty-four hours if I'm a forty-hour employee, twenty-one hours if I'm a thirty-five-hour employee. And on accumulation, you may not accumulate it, and for some reason, at the end of the calendar year, you have some days left over, it rolls over into your personal sick leave bank. So it's not use it or lose it, it's use it or convert it. And the rest of it's straightforward. So this is a reduction in hours personally for current employees.
From five to three, basically, days.
Exactly. And again, when you have the, the policy, or the policy, the, the, the Unit Two talks about five days, it recognizes that there are eight-hour days in September. On three point six, excuse me, this is the PTO, paytime off that we discussed. And I think the important thing here, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's been support for this, the previous board supported this policy, or the, the current board supports this policy. The arbitrary number here is the number of hours that are gonna be made available. This focuses that if I have less than twelve years of service, I'm going to have two-hundred-and-eight hours per year. If I have more than twelve hours of service, I'm gonna have two-hundred-and-forty-seven hours each year. And here's the calculations that you'll see there on the consultant note. The two-hundred-and-eight hours for less than twelve years of service is similar to vacation, fifteen days, there's my three weeks, eight days of sick leave, that's the new allowance, and three personally, that's the new allowance. And that ends up being two-hundred-and-eight. Now, the reason when I hit my twelfth year, I get that extra load of roughly, well, in this case, thirty-nine hours, is because of the extra week of vacation. And this is not contemplating whether or not I'm thirty-five or forty, because I think we recognize amongst these eligible employees, they all work in excess of one half. And again, the whole thought here, which is very common in the private sector where you have the PTO, is that these are your highly comp salaried employees that never take all their paid leave anyhow. They're always working more than forty hours, it's just, it's the nature of the job, and that's why you fall into the category of a high comp. Tell me when you're ready, and I'll talk about accumulation.
Does that divide it by nine point five?
Yeah, but, but away from the consultant note, like, I wanted to make this a little bit more, not so much based on what the standard is, because, you know, people take sick leave, they don't take three. The last sentence of the first paragraph, this allowance is based on eight hours times twenty-six, and then the last sentence of the second full paragraph, this allowance is based on nine point five hours times twenty-six. And that's why it doesn't work out to be two-forty-eight, it was around a half, a one hour.
So you get to almost the equivalent of thirty-one days after twelve years.
Okay.
Got it.
And again.
Which is really, that's really what it is.
Yeah, and again, we all recognize, most of the employees that are in this category are probably working ninety, ten-hour days.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. And again, this does not include your town clerk, city taxes, or town justices, because they are, even though they're department heads, they're, they're like, they're, they'd be set their own time schedules. Okay, so down on accumulation, when you have PTO, you get this issue of accumulation, and what happens is that you can't accumulate your PTO, but at the end of each calendar year, the employee may transfer up to eighty-eight hours of their unused PTO in what would be a designated catastrophic sick leave bank. So it's the same thing as a regular employee saving up their sick leave. This allows them to do that. They can roll the equivalent of eleven days into their own catastrophic sick leave bank.
So it's their own bank, yeah.
Well, just like, under sick leave, they have their own bank too. We don't call it a catastrophic bank, but since all of your leave is aggravated, it's not segregated, how, you don't wanna zero out the safety net.
Most of them.
You can zero out their vacation, you can zero out their personal, but you don't wanna zero out their safety net.
But this doesn't allow them to carry over time, like vacation time, to use in their future year. Is there a way that we could, is there a way to do it where you can carry over some? If somebody wanted to carry over vacation?
You could.
And then still give them the allowance for the catastrophic.
That's just the not done, because you go back to the, the concept, that amongst your high of comp, you can give them little or a lot of vacation, and it's very, very common that they don't take all their vacation anyhow. And this is very, very common, and from your own personal experiences, right? And, and so, if you allow them a bank, and they're your department head, they're running the show for you, you can't afford to have them off six, seven weeks in a future year. So if I can't use the three weeks, how am I ever gonna use five weeks another day? So the whole concept of rolling paid time off for purposes of leisure is really nonsensical for the plan. But to say, you have to zero out all of your time if you don't use it, and you can't come up with a catastrophic sick leave bank of your own, uh, you start to say, well, how can I carve that out? And we use it to, when we put these things together.
Just know that the plan that I was on had a carve out for carryover, so you could.
For the purposes of leisure.
For leisure, and I just think we need, we maybe wanna think about that, or get input from employees. I understand what you're saying, but I like the PTO plan.
Well, again, running your operations, how often can you afford to have the first, remember, look at the number of people that are in this category. How can you really afford to have them to be away from the work site more than four weeks?
Right, we have a limited number of employees, we're not like a thousand employees, like we were saying, four, five hundred.
Now, now, they, they actually have a little bit more liberty here, because, remember, your hourly employees are your, your, the people that are not in the PTO plan. Those individuals, their vacation is just for vacation, their personal is just for personal leave, that they have to take care of, that they can't take care of outside of your business hours, and their sick leave is because you live themselves or depend on your salary. Here, it's PTO. So you can actually have more than four weeks vacation. You have that liberty of using all of two-hundred-and-eight hours, you can take time off. And again, as we know with these employees, that they're often working eight, ten-hour days, they may take three hours off in the middle of the afternoon to take care of some personal business, but they're working until ten o'clock at night. It's just the nature of that employee. So it's not that you're limited to go four weeks vacation, but quite candidate, you rarely take more than four weeks because you can. You just go get your work. And how often do you come in and work on weekends and holidays, because you don't get bothered?
It's crucial to the ongoing of the town, every ship needs a captain, and he's not there.
And you were talking about how many people involved in this.
And again, I wanna stress, none of us are inventing this, this is a standard practice for this class of employees, and this is usually how it's administered. And can you count your, eight, is the chief of police in on that count?
Yes.
Because your current chief of police, I believe, has an employment contract, right? Do you have a copy of an employment contract with you?
I can look for it, yeah.
I've heard that there is one, but I haven't seen it. And I pointed out to the board that it is a fairly common, though not universal, practice in New York State, where chiefs of police. practice in New York State for chiefs of the police department, if that matters, where you have municipal fire departments, the chief there, to have their own employment contract. Now, consultants like myself argue that that is a bad practice. They're no different than the person that's running your building department or your finance department, why are they put in this special contract? They should be covered by your documents. And many municipalities are waking up to that, and when they have a new chief come in, they don't, they don't follow that practice of independent contract from the chief. They say, here it is. This is how we take care of our administrative employees. But I believe, as far as saying, if the chief does that, again, I want to stress that it's a common practice, also a bad practice. On the bereavement leave, this is straightforward, consultants note under the extended family, that the, there's three days for sister-in-law and brother-in-law, and one day for aunt and uncle, and that is being done. Now, the reasoning for this is, quite often, when you look at the purpose for immediate family, I don't really need to explain that, when you look at it's a spouse, parent, child, in your case, sibling, I want to say that sibling is not always in the immediate family, but certainly, parent, spouse, and child are, that even five days of bereavement leave is probably less than what that person will take in order to deal with making the arrangements for the funeral, dealing with the estate aspects of the death, and dealing with the grieving. So what you're saying as an employer is, I don't want you drawing down all of your vacation time for this horrible thing that's happened to you. We're going to give you at least one week. Now, when you get into the extended family, why is it not five days, but three days? And it's usually the case for grandparent, grandchild, or even your spouse's parent, that you are not the one that's dealing with the funeral arrangements. You're not dealing with anything with the estate, you're not the executor and the like. It's just a matter of grieving, really, there. And I don't need to diminish that, that it's a lesser allowance because you have lesser responsibilities and stuff. Then, why do you exclude, like, a sister-in-law, brother-in-law, aunt, or an uncle? Now, remember, this is paid time off to deal with something that's happened to even your family. And sister-in-law and brother-in-law, by definition, it could be either your sister's husband, or it could be your husband's sister. You could have, in some families, many brothers and sister-in-laws, and yet you have very little obligation for dealing with that death, other than the grieving. And aunt, uncles begin, are getting very removed. And so, many employers say, listen, I'm going to take care of you a little here for your immediate family, and I'll also give you some sort of financial relief against either your pay or your other leave credits for your extended family. But at a certain point, you have to say, use your vacation time. And that's what it says. But again, who you put in these categories is all arbitrary. This is just how it's structured.
I think that one also deserves some additional thought, because if you think about, you stay being that is correct, if you have a lot of brother-in-laws and sister-in-laws, but the likelihood of a lot of them passing away in their earning years, or their younger years, isn't likely. And the emotional impact of having, you know, my wife's sibling, or your husband's sibling pass away, I just think we need to think about this. For the number of times it's actually going to happen, you're certainly going to need to be by your spouse's side for something like that. And it may be a husband's, you know, extended sibling or something like that, but it's, I don't think we're giving away a lot, and I just think we need to think about this, because it's, you're true, the universe of how many there could be is a lot, but for them passing away in their younger years, or their working years, it's pretty catastrophic for somebody's spouse.
Well, and that, seriously, not to diminish this, it's, I want to just digress a little bit. It's amazing, in a lot of labor negotiations, this is always on the table. People are trying to add more and more and more, in some cases, the employer's trying to take, take away. And as soon as you're trying to take names off the list, you're being, keep being cold-hearted. And of course, when we're starting to put things back on the list, the employer's saying, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, why is it the taxpayer's responsibility to give you pay leave to deal with this horrible thing that's happened to your family? You have vacation time taken.
Well, this doesn't discount as personal time, this is separate from personal.
Separate, but it does.
They could always use personal, this is what personal time is for.
To a degree, right. And again, to your, your point is that, remember the old exercise that we started out with some time ago? Why do you have paid holidays? Well, because as an employer, I've decided I'm going to close my door that day, but that employee still needs a weekly pay. Why do you pay premium pay when somebody works on Christmas? Well, because they're working on Christmas while everybody else is having Christmas presents. Now, you ask the question, why do I pay premium pay for when somebody works on Columbus Day? And that starts to be a little bit more of a stretch, but you ask these questions, and you come up with your answers. Why do you have sick leave? You know that answer. Why do you have personally? You know that answer. On vacation, that's clear, you know, you need to get away and have it. Leisure. Why do you have bereavement leave? This is not only wage insurance, like sick leave and personal leave is, but it's also insurance against using your personal and your sick leave. So at a certain point, you say, five days is not enough if I lose my child. It's not enough. But the employer's going to give you five extra days that you don't hit into your personal leave or your sick leave or whatever. And then what about three? Well, in some cases, that might not be enough. I was raised by my grandparents, they were like my parents, right? I'm nothing if made. But you draw lines at a certain point where you say, okay, the taxpayer is no longer going to cover your loss of leave credits, use your leave credits. And to a certain point, you know, certainly, if you're dealing with a loss of an immediate, an employee may be able to tap into their sick leave, because there is an illness there, it's an emotional illness. So, but anyhow, again, Mark, to your point, I won't be a strong one, this is just, these are all arbitrary, we're in here...
Right. And I do have to draw a line somewhere, I agree with that, but I think if we probably looked at the historicals and the incidents of something like this, it's probably not a lot, I just don't think we're giving away a lot if we allow a spouse to use bereavement time. And yeah, you could use personal time, but because the personal time is limited, I think people use that for, you know, going to the doctor, running vacation, going to the doctor...
Well, no, on your current policy, you go to the doctor and do your sick leave, that's permissible.
Okay, well, you know, I got a shot for Christmas or something, you know...
But in 30 years of working, I've never used my personal time. I've never used all my personal time. So I mean, that's really what that's for, in my opinion, is...
Well, personally, the classic examples are personally oddly enough, that the most classic ones, the cable guys coming by, somebody over 18 has to be there.
But you don't plan, like, you can't plan for bereavement?
No.
So if you used your personal time earlier in the year, and then somebody close passed away, all I'm saying is, I don't think it's a lot to give up. If we added it back in, it is arbitrary, and if it was a, if it was abused, I could see why we went more restricted. But thinking in real terms, who are human beings, if, if these people are passing away at younger years, and it's a spouse, it's a pretty catastrophic event, an emotional event for people, that's all.
Okay, part four then, this gets us off of pay leave, return, return chapter. Part four deals with disabled employees under, on the job first, and then off the job second. What we do here is, this is a substantial and significant change in what's in the practice. Currently, the town provides full pay for the first six months, no questions asked, other than if you've got a claim out there that's been approved by the insurance carrier, you get six months' pay. What this does under 4.1.3 is it allows you to draw from your sick leave credits, then your personal leave credits, and then your vacation leave credits, in conjunction with your comp payments, equal but not exceed your regular daily rate of pay. So you keep yourself in pay status. Now, this is like made to it, you don't have to do it. Most employees will, because the comp check is just not enough. But if somebody feels they can get by on a comp check, that's okay, they can save their leave for another decade. And then, quite often, as Amel will know, and your controller, that there's often, the check isn't there yet, so when the check comes in, the town is reimbursed for the part that is covered by the insurance company, and then the employee's bank is credited with the appropriate amount back. Now, this is by far and by length the common practice in the public sector. It is the practice in the private sector. I know of no exceptions to it, this is the way it's done. And in the public sector also, this is the way, if I had a survey and I don't, 80, 90% of municipalities do it this way. And most of the time, a worker compensation check for lost time is going to be for a 26-week period, so you're still back into the six months. But what your situation was, is that they didn't use any of their leave credits they were paid for. On 414, this is the continuation of medical insurance. And what this does, it says that you will continue, let's just read it, the town will continue its coverage, and of course, with your family medical leave policy, which is over here at the other end, and this has modifications to it. Thereafter, now, that's 13 weeks, the three months, we call three months 13 weeks. Thereafter, an employee who's receiving comp payments for lost time and in capital letters is drawing full pay by using their crew leave will continue, because they are in, playing in pay status, right, if you're getting a paycheck. So as long as they're there for that remaining part, so the liability here would normally run out on somebody who has a safety net, would run out for the 26 weeks, and then it would stop. Now, if somebody has a huge bank of time, the liability is for one year, and then it stops. Now, typically, in the public sector, and this has been your practice as well, if somebody's out more than 52 weeks, you start proceeding under civil service to remove them from your payroll, and the town has a history of that. Okay? Now, on the next page, as we discussed last time, this assumes that you are going to drop short-term disability insurance for this group of employees and just become fully insured under your sick leave policy with that sick leave bank, that group sick leave bank. So with the group sick leave bank, you have a safety net that is there that is actually better than short-term disability insurance, where the $170 check comes back to you. So I got rid of all the language pertaining to coordination of leave and whatnot on that, because it's not necessary, it's covered by the sick leave bank. When I say sick leave bank, the group sick leave bank. But we still need that language on the continuation of medical insurance. And what this does is this, same as on workers' comp, you're covered by the Family Medical Leave Act for your three months, and then you can continue to get your medical insurance for the period that goes beyond that, provided you're in full pay status. And again, the practice, correctly, you have to get this one wrong, the practice has been that the employee would first use their leave credits and then go on a family line, or they go back?
No, they'd use their credits first and then go on a family line.
So there wasn't a concurrent draw? You weren't counting, the disability leave was not concurrent with the Family Medical Leave Act. And I have to stress that private sector and public sector alike, that is very, very rare. It's permissible. But in the private sector and in the public sector, it's virtually always concurrent. The disability starts the event for disability leave, for sick leave, for family medical leave, it all starts right on the same date. And your practice, and it's an unwritten practice, has been that, nope, you use your paid leave, then you get your family medical leave. So that stretches it out a long time, it's not concurrent.
What about restarting if an employee is out and then returns?
On family medical leave, or, well, family medical leave is a rolling 12-month period, and that's also under statute. So you always, you're allowed your 12 weeks, or 15 weeks, however you like to count, it's three months. And so you're always taking a look at, have I saturated my allowance? And so, when I have a qualifying event, at that moment, I look back 12 months to see if I have any available time. So if I've had nothing in the past 12 months, then I have my full credit. If I've been out six weeks, I'm only going to have, have half my time. It's always a look back. And you look back literally every week. So if, if, let's say I had, I used my six weeks at the very tail end of my rolling 12 months, right, so I'm saying that wrong, at the very beginning of my rolling 12 months, that's going to roll out. So you can't have more than the three months in a rolling 12-month period. But it's a constant goal. Now, on 4.3, the transitional duty program, I really don't see where you're going to utilize the transitional duty program much for this class of employees. But this is the policy that is very, very common, and recommended, this is recommended by NIRWA, it's also recommended by POCO and PERMA, they recommend this. And actually, Ronnie and Jeff Drivers and I worked on this some years ago to develop this policy, and they still have, all three of those organizations have us coming in and lecturing on. And their attorneys and others say that this is a very, very good program to have in play. And I also should note that I have dozens, literally dozens, of CSCA contracts that I have listed.
Is this equivalent to light duty, or...
Yeah, we avoid the word light duty, and we like to use transitional duty, because the light duty gets into some merits of disability, reasonable accommodation arguments.
We haven't utilized it in the chair much, we need to, this is something I talked about, yeah.
Yeah, and you have, you have similar provisions in the union contracts on this, and they are utilized. And I have to say that Jamie and Jimmy Craig together used it quite well in some cases in the past. But I think this would actually beef up the program. Now, I want to stress, as you read through this, that this is not an title that, I'm going to jump right in here, middle paragraph, 3431, "In the event employees unable to perform the full duties and responsibilities in employees' regular position, the town supervisor may, on a case-by-case basis, require the employee to return to work in a transitional duty assignment. The exercise of this transitional duty program shall not establish any precedent or commitment to provide this assignment to any other employee at any time in the future." Now, the penalty for this is flash down to the very bottom of the page, refusal of assignment. Now, I have intentionally put in that the ordering to work comes from the town supervisor. So it's, it's been better by that time. Are we going to order this person in? So that means that the process has talked to the insurance agent, looked at this case very, very carefully, and now we're saying, buddy, you come to work. In the event the employee refuses the transitional duty assignment, or refuses to submit a medical exam, examination, the matter will be referred to the insurance carriers on a case-by-case basis. Now, I have the New York State disabilities to link here, because that would be applicable for your union representing the place. We cannot give any disability insurance there without negotiations. My guess is, is that the union will agree to give them the short-term disability insurance, as long as they have that group sick leave bank. But what happens here is the insurance carrier will turn off the plane.
Are you okay with keeping that with the supervisor? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. How about, would it be wise to put in either town supervisor or town administrator?
Well, yeah, I thought about, I did go through and refresh this document, the compliance document, and also I was looking through here. In many cases, I would put in the town administrator. What's the, is that very likely to happen, so that I should actually edit the text for that?
Yes.
Then let me do that. There, I would say, Howard, that probably, this is just a generalization, two-thirds of the references to town supervisor will be replaced with the town administrator.
You're going to do either or?
I would say you don't want to get caught in this mother-father routine.
Yeah.
Daddy said. Now, there's sometimes that you as the elected official, and I'll use my discretion there, as the elected official, the town supervisor does need a call shot. But in other cases, the administrators and things, not the policy things. If policy is going to be interpreted, the town supervisor should interpret a policy. As far as the administration, not that she is an administrator. As far as the administration, none of it should be administered.
It's not worth going through each reference and making sure that you're comfortable not having the authority.
Right.
I kind of flagged that before.
Because you may, the way I want to have supervisor will give some certain things up, so we should, nervous reference, we should check that.
Well, I'll go through and I'll flag changes. Wonderful aspect of word processors. Do word service. Okay. Part five and part six. So I just want to take a recap break here. I basically heard, other than this last editing of the role of the town administrator, that you want to take a closer look at the individuals and extended family under bereavement. And you also want to do an analysis of those people who would be losing time under the new sick leave policy. And other than that, we're set with this? Those are the two things that you want to visit, yeah?
I think, I gotta go through it again, but I think, yeah, that sounds pretty good. And for sick, not forward, just past.
Just past.
Not what they would lose in the future, just what?
Yeah, it's those three people. Yeah, go and take a look at those three people.
It's five.
Five minutes, we're around town, private sector, essentially. Okay. Now, the rest of this is all medical insurance for actors and retirees. So here, on the eligibility, the general concept is, and as far as some of what we were talking about a year, two years ago, is insurer of last resort. So therefore, you don't have a medical insurance buyout. And with medical insurance buyout, you're coming up with a policy that says, I'm going to give you an incentive to migrate to another plan, through your spouse or another employer. You don't need to have that incentive because you don't even get the insurance if you have another one. Now, I do need to note that in the unit one highway contract, employees that have been hired since two thousand and one, I think, in public state, they have, where they can't get insurance from the town if they have another source. And there's like, we have two employees maybe, that can't get insurance because they have another source. And they don't get the buyout because, well, that's saying.
And how do you verify that? I'm sorry.
Well, basically, we follow what you see right down here on five-one-three, and we put together some forms a couple of years ago. And it says, you have to provide a verification on a date set by the town board, and actually, it's a date that's set by Ann's office, because she does the check. And if you were to falsify that document, you'd be unemployed.
But how do you determine?
Whether or not they have coverage or is comparable.
Either.
Okay, whether or not they have coverage, you have the right to follow up and call.
Okay, so they're waiving, you know, they're giving us the contact.
Yeah, on the form, there's a waiver. And it says that. Now, on the comparability, for the time being, and I will leave it this way, if there is a question on whether or not a plan's comparable or not, I've been the judge. And it's simply because I have such a strong background in healthcare. If I were not to be your consultant sometime, I would use a broker if you have one, and you were going to be considering talking to a broker or some other person who has a strong background that just knows the plans. You don't even have to look at the plans, you know them by name.
So can I understand this? So I'm looking at this whole first thing. So you're saying here that for this group of people, if they have another source of comparable coverage, they are not entitled to medical or dental information?
Yeah, and a little side note, that's also the case with the new hires in the unit one. Because the labor contract already has.
In highway, right.
In highway only, right, in the other one.
That's right.
So, and how are you opting out the town justices here?
Well, there's a conversation, and this goes back to a long year ago, again, so this board has not looked at this. Let's look at the eligibility on five-one-one right from the get-go. Let's take two to three paragraphs, justices. And the first one, the town will make available a medical insurance plan and prescription drug plan to each full-time employee and employee's eligible family members, provided the employee has no other source of comparable coverage. And comparable is a well-defined word within employment law.
Okay, but I'm sorry, can I just, because it's so important as we administer the benefits and it also, you know, affects a small group of people right from the adoptions, is the way I'm understanding, is that correct? Right from the adoption of this policy?
Yeah, this would be immediate, except for the justices.
Okay, so, so for, under eligibility, we're not talking here immediately about union represented employees because they're.
Except for unit one. But for the unit two employees and the library employees, no, that has to be negotiated.
Exactly. Right. So the town is not making a medical insurance and prescription drug plan available to the town clerk, receiver of taxes, and other elected officials, right? And such, oh, and family members.
Willing available.
Yeah, now, we're here.
No, 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 not if there's another source of comparable coverage.
Right, insurer of last resort for all of these individuals. Now, again, the issue is comparable coverage. So the town will make available, second paragraph, the plans, list of plans, to the town clerk and receiver of taxes. The document that we were working with a long year ago also had the town supervisor in there, and that's now removed. Now, the one thing that we do need to plug back, no, we don't need to plug back in. I was going to say, we'd have to put the town administrator, but the town administrator is a highly competent employee, so of course they're covered. Take the comparable. So this, the only elected officials that are covered in paragraph two are the town clerk and receiver of taxes. And I think that goes without explanation, that even though those are elected people, they function as if they were a line employee, an administrative employee.
But that's only if they have no other comparable coverage.
Yeah, if they have comparable coverage, they need to take a comparable.
Right, so there's no, there's no buyout and there's no.
There's no buyout.
There's no insurance if they have a spouse that offers a comparable claim.
Correct. Is that insurer of last resort?
So that's basically two positions that are, that this current policy, if it's adopted, would affect.
It would affect all the positions, except for the unit one employees. Any unit one employee since two thousand and one has had the insurer of last resort provision. All your own employees do not have the insurance of last resort.
But this would have to be negotiated with unions?
With unit two and unit three only.
Right. That's the, I understand, but that's, you know, that's the bulk of the case.
Well, unit one, it would have to be negotiated with those who were hired, more than two thousand and one.
But this is for new employees or existing?
Existing, because you do this right now, except for you do it with an incentive for a buyout.
Right.
And so the practice has been, with the exception of those two guys in the highway department, the practice has been, you get medical insurance coverage and we'll give you a buyout incentive for you to migrate over to your spouse's plan or if by chance you have a source like Veterans Administration or something like that, some other place to go. So this stops that practice, it goes over to the insurer of last resort, saying, I'm not going to give you an incentive. If you've got insurance from another source, take it. If you don't have insurance from another source, then we'll insure it. And yet, this is not new from the conversation that we had in November two thousand and ten, this hasn't changed.
Well, we're very stuck on this in two thousand and ten.
But we weren't pulling, at that time, I don't remember, pulling insurance away from people who had insurance.
You're not pulling insurance away from anybody. They still have insurance, who's paying for it? If somebody doesn't have insurance, you give it to them. So it's not denying insurance to anybody. What you're saying, if you have insurance elsewhere, don't come to the taxpayers' north castle and get your insurance, get it elsewhere.
But you also eliminate the buyout.
It eliminates the buyout because if you have insurance of last resort, you don't need the buyout. You need the buyout when you don't have insurance of last resort. One is where you're saying, I'll give you an incentive to migrate. The other one's saying, I'll give you a safety net. If you don't have it elsewhere, I'll take care of it.
The other aspect of that is that when they weren't contributing anything to their medical, there wasn't as strong as incentive. Now that they're contributing, the incentive's there automatically to take less costly one. So the buyout is not as important.
And as a matter of fact, that once your buyout gets more, I can't even speak, sort of, once the employee contribution to medical insurance gets beyond twenty-five percent, you often don't need the incentive for them to migrate. For example, the state of New York has now gone for all of their employees that make more than thirty-five thousand a year, they have paid thirty-one percent of the premium. They don't do buyouts. Because if you've got insurance someplace else, why am I paying thirty-one percent and having the taxpayer pay sixty-nine percent? There's an incentive there to migrate. But quite often, where we came in with these buyout provisions is where the copay for the employee was anywhere from zero to fifteen percent. And you need to have a little bit of that. Much to go.
So what about those employees that are non-union, aside from the town clerk and receiver of taxes?
Well, that's right.
No, yeah. Paragraph one takes care of all employees, paragraph two takes care of the elected officials, paragraph three takes care of the justices. So town board members and the town supervisor, they're not in it. Because no insurance made available to town board members, including the town supervisor. So paragraph one is employees, paragraph two are those two elected officials, and paragraph three are the justices. And again, this goes back to the discussion that we were having in two thousand and ten. The town will make available to those town justices, who as of December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven, were enrolled in the plan. And they get it for the duration of the current term. But when they go to be reelected or there's a new justice that comes in, that's not made available for them.
Well, personally, I would recommend to do that with the town clerk and the receiver of taxes. I don't, I mean, you know, there are elected positions that are in a term, and to change something without, you know, regard to their term does not seem to be comparable to what you're doing.
This is a town board discussion.
Well, it's also, it's important because people don't always understand what's being included in this policy and who it affects and when it goes into effect. As Mike asked a question, which wasn't clear to him, about who, when does it go into effect?
I'm curious why the clerk and the receiver tax or taxes is singled out. Is that because in many towns, that's a winning position rather than elected?
No, that's not the reason.
Because it's more like the line people.
Yeah, it's a good reason, it's not the core reason. In fact, in most municipalities throughout the state, small, large, the town clerk and the receiver of taxes, of course, you have to be class one town to have a receiver of taxes. They're elected.
They are.
Yeah, the number of appointments. You know, it's kind of peculiar because you find the appointed town clerk more often in the smaller towns. Do you think it'd be that way around? But it really comes down that they tend to be there a long time. It's not uncommon to see the highway superintendent who's elected, the town clerk who's elected, and the receiver of taxes, if they're had on, who's elected, even be eligible for retirement medical because they're, often seem to be there for twenty-five, thirty years, and they're just like an employee. But instead of being governed by the civil service laws where it's merit and qualifications, it's you go for your certification every two years or four years. So it's just because they're really considered to be. Now, I'm just stretching my memory. Where there's medical insurance, often, and the clerk's position is considered full-time, I can't think of an example where they don't get it, where they're treated like an employee. Same thing for the highway superintendent. Now, whether or not for retiree medical, that's a whole other story, whether they're included or not. You see where it is, there's other policies where no elected officials get included. You chose this office, you went to this office. We've had situations where somebody had been the town clerk for, say, twenty-two years, and they didn't get reelected. They retired on December thirty-first. So they could get retirement medical. So that's not constant, but for active clerks and active receiver of taxes, they're in full-time status, they're treated as a regular employee. And that's why you have to have a standard one paragraph because you got to address them, especially since you're excluding other elected officials.
Well, I'll give my opinion on this. I think certainly needs some reform to it, and especially for new employees. The incentive was a good idea, the buyout. Didn't really work as we had hoped, although there would be a significant savings, it didn't really incent people, so I don't think it's a big deal if it goes away. I do have an issue with, with current employees, just drawing the line at one date and saying, okay, you're not covered anymore if your spouse's coverage is different or better than ours. I could see for new employees, because we're dealing with such a small universe, I think that's a, that's a hard policy. And when you're looking at the amount of savings that we're going to look at, you're not talking about a couple of hundred employees with this policy, you're talking about a couple of them. I just think that's a hard policy. The other thing I would disagree with, and I, you know, I know the supervisor didn't do it, but I do think, I'm okay with the town board not having paid medical insurance. I do think they should have the opportunity perhaps to participate in it at their own cost, if they have no other source of healthcare. I do think the supervisor's position should have access to healthcare, even if it's at a high percentage of contribution. Because if you're giving it to the judges.
Well, only grandfather, even that'll be for their term.
Okay. So, but I do think that.
Excuse me for the interruption, I don't want to miss it. When, I knew the answer when we were down with the judges in November of two thousand and ten. When are these judges up for reelection? Are they both up for the election?
One's in, one was just elected.
Looks just like the other one's up next year.
Yeah, so that, this whole paragraph would be obsolete next year. Because the one judge didn't hold office prior to January one. And the other one will be reelected next year. So when he runs for reelection, he'll be running.
She did hold, well, she was reelected.
Yeah, it says, the person that's up this, this next year, though.
On the September third first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And even the one that.
And then the one that up next is, runs again.
Yeah. And so, but actually, that person, for the duration of such elected official's current term of office. And so you had to have it on December thirty-first, arguably, that person would have it for the remainder of her term.
But we hadn't approved this one.
No.
I think that's another one that deserves stuff, because we talked about this. And the judge position, their hours are sometimes chaotic. And they may need to be called in in the middle of the night or something. I just think it's something that we should think about as well.
To the statistics, very rare does any town justice get medical insurance. Even in most district counties, it's just, it's not a common practice. It happens, but it's very rare. And for various reasons, most, all these individuals, it's not their primary employment, it's secondary. And secondary employment doesn't apply at that place. So again, when you go back over to your town clerk and the receiver of taxes, that is their primary. There's a great likelihood that they'll be in that position for a long period of time. They rarely open up an office, they do, so you take a different perception towards them.
Don't worry, that's my input on it. I would not, I don't think we should be taking coverage away from employees who currently have it. I think for new employees, definitely.
You're not taking coverage away. They have coverage and it's comparable.
Coverage from this employer.
It's who's paying for it.
Right.
So if coverage is available elsewhere, why have the taxpayer pay for it?
What happens in the event that, again, we're talking about a small universe here, the spouse's employer, whether it's public sector or private sector, has the same policy?
Usually the line is drawn just like on insurance plans, it's who's the first one? Who, if you have a spouse and you have two family plans, who's the primary carrier? The person that had the insurance first. And that's how all insurance companies work, all of them.
So if an employee, again, this is fine tuning, but an employee spouse had coverage better, they moved to that plan. If that spouse, for some reason, no longer worked there, they'd switch back to us.
Let's say that you had a couple, and that other employer had insurer of last resort clause. Who was employed by the employer, their employer, first? That becomes the primary person. So you would call up that person and say, I know that you're trying to cause your employee. So you would call up that person and say, "I know that you're trying to cause your employee to come onto our plan, but we're requiring our employee to go onto your plan because you employed that employee before we employed our employee." Or vice versa, because you already know about. And again, that's a standard argument of primary coverage anyhow when you have dual plans. So we're not making up the game.
Does it ever put the employee in a tense situation? Or, I can see that being kind of a.
I never heard. I mean, HR departments, even though sometimes they're competent, they're usually not hostile.
Depends. Depends on their numbers. Well, I know the county has a lot of success with this program going back years by making new employees do this analysis. And they would not insure them if they had comparable spouse coverage. My concern is the small universe we have, having people that we currently insure and then not allow them to be insured.
Does even the town clerk, you have a new receiver of taxes, right?
No, no.
Do either of us two have to take the buyout now?
One does, one doesn't.
So that's really you?
Excuse me.
About you?
It's actually, it's constant.
It's, it's every pay period, I mean, every month when there would be a deduction for health insurance.
The reason it has a constant flow to it, there's different plans, different policies. The reason yours has a constant flow to it is that it's assuming that the spouse's plan or the alternate plan has a monthly or pay period-to-pay period copay on the premium. And so that employee is paying out whatever forty-five, fifty-five, a hundred and five dollars per pay period or per month. And so the employee over here, they're getting their buyout in the same rotation. So as far as that family's concerned, it's money in, money out. And your policy has it that you take the copay for the spouse's plan, you mark it up for tax purposes, and then they get a bonus on top of that of buyout. So that's even Irish out by the twenty-six pay periods. So if, for some reason, the employee spouse loses the insurance plan, and you lose your spouse in divorce, you could automatically come back onto the town's plan and there's no you owe me money or I owe you money. You just sell it off immediately on the next pay period. And the same thing, if somebody's spouse mid-year gets a great job with great benefits and you decide to migrate onto their plan, it kicks in right away. So you have easy in, easy out. Now, there is an open enrollment period every November for January one where you can now whimsically decide to take a buyout. But otherwise, it happens pretty much on, you know. Okay, so the issues here that we might want to hold is on this aspect that the buyout goes away because you don't have buyouts on insurance.
I don't think we're holding anything. I think we're going to have an executive session.
Yeah.
We made everything in here.
Verification, we talked about that. Effective date, we talked about that. Insurance plan, this is language that we hope to get into the union contract that allows you to change coverage, insurance plans. So the financial aspect of this. And I don't know if I got this right, Howard, from our conversation the other day. On five-one-seven, all new employees are now paying thirty percent copay on the premium?
Yes.
Okay, so I have five-one-seven correct. This is for elected officials and employees previously with premium copay payment. So for an elected official, actually, I should just drop all that. That should just come out completely. It should just say premiums, those that are hired after December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven. The reason that was in there is that was holdover language from our previous format. So any elected official or employee who had premium copay as of December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven, that drops off awesome. So if you were just hired prior to two thousand and eleven, hired after, or elected, you were hired or elected after December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven, the town will pay seventy percent of the monthly premium for individual or family coverage as the case may be. And that's correct. Right now.
Is it, are you on five-one-seven?
Yeah, because I was told that that was something that was.
So you are hired, did you say after December thirty-first?
Office first of January.
Two thousand and twelve.
Well, and also, your secretary was hired after January one, so she's paying twenty percent.
Thirty percent. And so does the new assessor.
The new assessor, okay.
I think you want to say newly elected.
No, the date, the date of term is in.
Well, that means that for someone who remains in office, as they get re-elected, their benefits would change based on?
Correct. Well, back up on five-one-six, I think this is, let's take a look at that. Because this is work that I did last week after our last meeting. So if you're seeing this for the first time. This is for elected officials or employees who previously had no premium copay. And I don't even know if that makes any difference. But let's look at it. If you're hired or elected after December thirty-one of eleven, you go to seventy percent, thirty percent, right up. Now, this is consultant's recommendation that for your other current employees that you phase this in, it would not be done overnight. And the phase in, as you can see there, is ninety percent, then eighty percent, then seventy percent.
So you already have eighty percent, you'd wait until four, change it to seventy?
If it's phased in, it wouldn't be overnight. Now, you have some employees, and again, we'd have to go look at this population of the five. You have some employees that perhaps are contributing nothing. And you have some that are contributing twenty percent and some that are contributing fifteen percent, depending on their hire date and years of service.
So this would, by the end of two thousand, from January two thousand and fourteen, everybody would be standard?
At the beginning of two fourteen.
But this clauses for only people who currently pay no premium?
Well, I think we need to work on this. Again, my apologies on this point. I wasn't exactly sure what was happening. When we were working on this in November of two thousand and ten, we had five, four different scenarios. Four different scenarios. Those that were paying nothing, those that were paying something, those that got hired before a certain date. Those, we had four different scenarios. And I should have taken out the banner on all of those because it becomes confusing. I think what you need to decide, if it's a simple thing as this, if it's this simple, hired since the first of this year, you're paying thirty percent now. Hired before, what are you paying? Is it, are there subgroups or does everybody go ninety, eighty, seventy?
Basically, what you're saying is anybody who's paying between zero and thirty percent now would phase into this.
Well, I think we brought language that you would stay at your, so let's say you're, you're paying fifteen percent now. You'll stay at that fifteen percent for the remainder of this year. And then on January first of thirteen, you'll go to eighty. And January first of fourteen, you go to seventy. Let's say you're paying eighty percent now. Well, you'll stay at eighty percent until January first of thirteen, where it is eighty percent. And let's say you're paying nothing, well, then you'll. So we, we clean that language up a little bit to catch those people. And again, I want to take a look at the survey of who they are, so I write up my language. I need to put a step in if that person doesn't even exist. So I think if, if the policy is a simple one of you have two groups, then we don't need all this banner language.
How does this impact the union negotiations?
Well, quite candidly, I think all of these proposals in the compensation and benefits manual impact the negotiations.
I'm sorry, she said that differently. Specifically from a timing standpoint, to go to two fourteen. I mean, does that sync up with your?
Yeah, perfectly. Doesn't mean we're going to be successful in getting that level of contribution. But I, if you're aware of this, we've talked about this before, that this union, like most unions, has said very clearly, "Don't come knocking on my doors until you take care of your non-union employees. We're not going to be the first ones to concede." And Sheila has made that very clear. We understand, I mean, CSCA is doing concessional bargaining around the state. And look, all state employees are not paying thirty-one percent. That was a huge concession, they used to be twenty-five. So concessional bargaining's happening all over the place and they know it. But they usually say, "Do it to your, the people that you can do it to unilaterally first before you come knocking on our door." So I think this sets the framework for that. And quite candidly, getting to the seventy percent mark eventually for all employees is a table. It's in the realm of what is becoming the norm. I even have a police department in the capital district that's paying thirty percent now. It's almost unheard of for a cliche.
Oh, it comes down to do they want jobs or, you know, contributions.
Okay. The next page, five point two, this is operational language. I put it here instead of in the Employment Practices Compliance Manual because you do run a one-twenty-five federal spending allowance. Five point three, regarding medical insurance, this is a boilerplate language on Cobra. The reason we put it in five point three point two is it's important, I think, for somebody to find this thirty-day, sixty-day type language right at the fingertips and then go to the website and then be checked on. So now, looking at part six. And we had a very lengthy conversation, which we call, at the beginning of our last week's talk, where we talked about the deferred compensation. And so let's first go through the eligibility. Then let's talk about the insurance plan. So six-two-one, six-two-three are talking about the eligibility as far as who's covered. The insurance plan, six-two-four. And then we'll get over into six-two-five, which talks more about the eligibility based on your service age. And then the big one, the premium contributions. So at six-two-one, this provides retiree medical insurance to employees, full-time employees. Oh, I just need to digress on something. Let me just mention this, let's go back to talk about. We had a conversation whereby the supervisor suggested that part-time employees no longer have benefits in this group. And so I took that out. And I did point that out when we were going through the sick leave, the personal leave, and the vacation leave. If you're not full-time, there are no benefits. Now, in this group of people, they're all full-time. That would be a major issue, not a major issue, it would be a significant issue in negotiations. Not major because you don't have a lot working, but there are some.
Well, currently, the threshold is seventeen hours.
And then it's graduated.
But it's pro-lated too.
Yeah, pro-lated. I forgot, pro-lated. And so this just says, no. If you're, if you're not full-time, there are no benefits.
So I think she added that to this sheet?
I did.
Oh, where is it?
Under, under each one of the columns, you talk about part-time employees.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
I should have picked it up in my summary as we go back through each one of those. And again, there's no impact in this particular cadre because remember, the Employment Practices Compliance Manual is for all employees and elected officials. This is just for the non-union employees and where applicable elected officials. So back to the retirees then. A full-time employee is receiving retirement benefits under one of the state retirement systems. And here again, insured last resort, provided the retiree has no other source of comparable coverage. And then standalone, so we don't lose this, and this is critical discussion, elected officials, current and former, are not eligible for medical insurance benefits for retirees. So here you're reaching back into the past. And then, we always like to put it in this language of notwithstanding the above, if you're being fired, you're not going to be eligible for this benefit.
Can I just clarify something? So what you just said about elected officials, current and former, not eligible for medical benefits as retirees? It says for retired, you know, so someone who has retired and is currently enlily in the health plan would no longer be able to participate?
That someone being an elected official?
I have a question for you, Matt. Being that in the current medical plan here, you wanted to include clerk and receiver taxes since they're longstanding employees, would they also be included, possible retirees?
Well, that's, that's a policy decision on your part. Again, I pointed out to you that, and my understanding, what others do is rather extensive because they're talking about three hundred policies around the state. I don't know of any exception where a full-time clerk or receiver taxes is not getting it as an active. But retiree, it's all over the map. Some do it, some don't do it. Basically, they say, "We're not going to give the town clerk and receiver of taxes a retirement benefit because that was an elected position. It was always subject to being gone tomorrow." Now, again, under a civil service position, where that's an employee that has the job, they had every reason to believe that as long as they didn't engage in misconduct or incompetence, that they were going to have their job until they retired. And there's section seventy-five proceedings to protect that. Elected officials never have that protection. It's always, do the people like me, or if they maybe still like me, but they like the other person better, I'm either in office or out of office. So some municipalities don't allow any elected official to come into the retiree benefit. Others do. So I'm a grandfather. Just recently, another client mine in Ulster County, they took it away from all elected officials, but they grandfathered their clerk. They don't have a receiver taxes, they're too small.
Well, it just seems like you're holding two standards. One, you're saying that they're longstanding employees, that's sort of there for life. And the other is saying they're elected officials, so you're using two different standards.
Well, no, no, it's starting to clear about it. And again, I'm trying to borrow reasoning that is used in other places. You have your own, no, for an active clerk or receiver of taxes, you give them that benefit because they're there, that's their primary employment, not their secondary employment. And they expect to be there for a long time, they expect to be here, but there's no guarantee. But as far as the retiree aspect, well, no. Because you may retire or you may not retire. It's not based on how good of a job you're doing, it's whether or not you're re-elected. And so this is something that you decided to become a public servant and run for an election and stuff like that, we're not going to treat you like an employee. So in one case, you do treat them somewhat like an employee for the benefit package. But you don't treat them like an employee when it comes to retiree medical. And again, it's just a policy decision. And I just want to underscore what I've said, that for actives, I don't know any example where a full-time doesn't get as an active as retiree, it's really different in different places. Again, there's roughly twenty percent of all municipalities, now, this is villages, towns, all of it, that don't provide any retirement medical benefits. There are some that only provide between age sixty-two and sixty-five. And once you're sixty-five, you're Medicare-like the rest of the people, they're paying taxes. And then there's those that provide these wonderful plans until you die, paid for in full. So it's really all over the place. A lot of my clients are going to where at sixty-five, it stops. You want to truncate your liability at sixty-five, you go to Medicare. No supplemental plans, it's over. And again, there's a lot of places that are saying that you can't retire at age fifty-five, you have to be sixty-two. So we're only covering from sixty-two to sixty-five, three-year per year. And even of that, you're still coming up with about an eighty thousand dollar post-employment benefit. It's subject. Today's newspaper, the governor's come out that he's going after that tier six and it's sixty-five to retire, not sixty-two. And they're not going to allow a fifty-five out. You've got to be sixty-five to retire. No graduating penalties, you've got to be sixty-five. And here again, we've had a tendency to match our retiree medical with our pension plan that allows somebody to go at age fifty-five even though they're getting a reduced benefit. But yet we allow somebody to go at age fifty-five with no reduced benefit on the retiree medical. And there's many people that will say, "I'll take my penalties on my pension because I'm getting full medical." getting full medical. It's just, it's starting a whole different trend where people are saying, I will give you some sort of protection between age sixty-two because you can retire without a penalty at sixty-five. But after sixty-five, it's Medicare only. Well, if you probably surveyed even the constituency here, I would say that well over half, if not two-thirds of your employees, they only have Medicare. Are I said employees, constituents, taxpayers. We have Medicare. Retiree medical insurance is non-existent outside the public sector. So that's the pressure there. But again, if you were to, this elected officials, current and former, if you were to your grandfather, continue, whatever, this really.
I would ask, I would, that we just look at, we have a list of people, they're former elected officials, you know, they've spent a lot of time in this town, let's just look at that before. I think the tier-six thing is a wonderful thing that will help us in forty years, but if the governor and legislature don't do anything to help people who haven't retired yet, then that's not going to really help any of us in our lifetime, unfortunately. But I do think this, again, we're small enough where I would ask that we at least review who this is going to impact, because there are people on the retiree list that we should forgive.
We'll do that. Again, this is insurer of last resort, so we have to have verification language on six-two-two. On six-two-three, coverage is available for the retiree's eligible spouse. If the spouse was eligible for coverage under the town's medical insurance plan on the retiree's last date of employment with the town, and the spouse is not eligible to receive comparable coverage under another plan. So for example, what this does, of course, is that you can't leave employment here and remarried and bring that person onto the plan. So somebody had to be here, and if they weren't on the plan at the time, because maybe they had insurance through another source then, the later they don't, they had to be eligible at the time, meaning you had to be married at the time. If the retiree predeceases, the spouse, the spouse may continue coverage, but they have to pay the full premium. And of course, if the spouse were to leave that employee, they get coverage. Now, on insurance plan, this says that you will make the same medical plan that you make for active employees who are not members of the collective bargaining unit. So whatever plan is sitting over here for your actives, that's the one that's for your retirees. Now, the exception we'll see is on the Medicare. When the retiree or retiree's eligible spouse, as the case may be, against the eligibility criteria for Medicare, that individual will be enrolled in a Medicare supplemental policy made available through the town. Now, NYSHIP right now has a built-in retiree supplement. If you were to switch over to, say, an MVP or an ETHNA or United Health, they have plans available for you buying supplemental. Also, some employers are now buying off that menu that's available through AARP. They have about fifty-two plans that are available, and they're buying certain plans like that. And then the catch-all is that the town board made any time sole discretion, which is the medical insurance plan, including plant carrier, plant design, copayments, and the doctors. Now, the eligibility for employees who retire after March one, two thousand and twelve, and the reason for that is that it really makes no sense for you to go change the eligibility requirements for somebody who's already retired. You could change eligibility requirements and then disqualify them, but I'm assuming you don't do that. And so this is for new retirees, that you have to have at least twenty years of service. This is not new employees, these are new retirees, so these are all your current employees. Twenty years of service, it does not have to be continuous, we just have to give you twenty years, be at least fifty-five, retire directly from the town, and of course, number four is a given by the controller's opinion, you have to be in one of the retirement systems.
And it has to be for our town?
You have to retire.
This employer?
Your town.
No, but not retire from our town, but work for us for the twenty years.
Yes, it's.
You can't carry time from another municipality.
Have at least twenty years of benefit-eligible service with the town.
No, I'm saying, we should, just making sure that that's what it says.
Like's correct in pension plan, you can work anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just making sure it doesn't.
Yeah, unless the other municipality was to pick up, unless they were there for ten years, they're going to pick up fifty percent of the liability, sure, no problem. Now, to review, I did not put in consultant notes here, but on your comparison page on summary changes, it has what your current old employee requirements are. Do you think I know them off the top of my head? Now, I must say, the trend is to go towards thirty years of service. So I have policies out there that are ranging anywhere from a minimum of twenty to a minimum of thirty. Some of them say twenty, some of them say twenty-five, some of them say thirty. There's quite a few out there, as I said earlier, that are going to sixty-two years to get the benefit, you can't go at fifty-five. I mean, if you want to retire and take your pension at fifty-five, that's between you and the state controller, which you're not going to get medical insurance at fifty-five, you need to work until you're sixty-two. I came in with the twenty and fifty-five, because these are the numbers we were working with in November of two thousand and ten. So in brief, as we look through all of six point two up to the premium, the only thing that is different from November of two thousand and ten is elected officials, current and former. And that's why it's found in residence in both. So literally, everything, including this eligibility language right here, is the same that we had, like, in Diana John, in November of two thousand and ten, except for that one. So now, as Jeff is closing, this is the last piece of the puzzle, on the premiums. This says that if you retire on or after March one, two thousand and twelve, that the town will pay sixty percent of the premium, but the maximum liability is capped based on this really simple mathematic formula of four dollars an hour for every hour that you work. So again, if I am a sixteen-dollar-an-hour employee, that's a twenty-five percent surcharge on my wage. If I'm a forty-dollar-an-hour employee, it's a ten percent surcharge on my wage. But it's saying, I'm going to treat all of the employees the same, and I'm deferring four dollars an hour for every hour they work into a fund that will pay sixty percent of the premium. Now, that could say one hundred percent of the premium, but of course, the fund will run out soon. It could say fifty percent of the premium, and the fund will last a little longer. But basically, what you're saying is, we'll pick up sixty percent of the premium cost, and we will cover you until the bank runs out. And each retiree would have a bank. Now, we talked very briefly the last time we were together last week, that some municipalities are starting to look at doing a percentile of salary. So you might put in there that I will do twenty percent of your salary. So if over the time that I was with you, instead of having four dollars an hour going in, it would be graduated, so your higher comps would get a bigger bank, and your lower comps would get a smaller bank. The fixed amount, everybody gets the same deferred dollar. The percentile, the relative amount, would be front of your pay bracket.
What that doesn't allow you to do, that last version, is project. Because if you're a business, then this helps.
You know what your cost is.
You know, that way, it's a variable, almost like variable of a percentage of the premium with no cap, because of the premium skyrocket, that's like where we are now. You keep paying more, you can't control it.
You have all the risk.
So this caps it.
Also, by your paying a percentage, the higher people actually come up with more, and then was probably the least needed.
Yeah.
So what happens here, Michael, if, I think I understand this, the proposal at least, it's sixty percent of the premium, starting at twenty years, which is similar to where this old one was.
Yeah.
But use an extreme example, where sixty percent of premium, let's say you're premium at a hundred grand for the year, that's sixty thousand dollars eats into the hundred, sixty-six thousand left, right?
Yeah, using that.
You have two things going at one time.
Yeah, using that.
I'm trying just to get to the end quickly. I'm trying, I'm just trying to get to the end quickly. So there's two things working at the same time. You're paying a percentage of a premium, but there's also another bucket that's accumulating, and you know how much is left.
Yeah, and quite candidly, if I have twenty-five years of service, and my bucket is two-hundred and eight thousand, and I'm paying forty percent, the fund is paying the other sixty percent, that very likely is going to take me to my life expectancy. If I'm leaving you at twenty years, I'm probably going to run out of money before I get to my life expectancy, unless I'm retiring at an old age, so I'm more or less close to my life expectancy.
But it'll also, you don't know because you know where insurance costs are going. So if insurance costs continue to skyrocket beyond rate of inflation, that might not be true, but that still leaves us the ability to predict what the budget would be.
But then also, hopefully, they won't to Medicaid.
Sure. Yeah, and I can break out, you've seen the presentations I did where I have the role of cost, assuming seventy percent inflation, nine percent inflation, and all that. I can show you where the assumptions are, including with the Medicare supplemental plan. And if you're paying eighty-five percent or more, the twenty-year liability is roughly four hundred thousand dollars. So if I'm paying sixty percent, this easy head map, I start to bring that down to around three hundred thousand liability, because I'm reducing it by twenty percent.
Right.
And so you can look in there, that if I'm a twenty-five-year employee of two thousand and eight, and I complied a competitive medical insurance plan, there's a good chance that's going to take me to my life expectancy.
No guarantee you're retired at fifty-five. So if you move that age up to sixty, for instance, changes the whole.
Yeah, again, using seventy-nine as life expectancy, maybe you live longer.
And on your formula, using the twenty-five year as that example, that's where we're dipping a little over four dollars an hour into the tin can.
Right now, you're ten.
No, I'm talking about the way you projected this. So you're trying to reduce that, you can't reserve, state law won't allow us to reserve for it, but that's the premise on how you constructed this, is it's still a contribution per hour, you can't reserve for it, but it brings it down more into, well, more, because this would be fifty thousand hours, somebody who worked twenty-five years, divided into those numbers, gets to about four dollars and sixteen cents or whatever.
As you recall from when we talked last week, that if we were to sit down and put together a compensation plan, and at the very end of it, we were talking about retiree medical, which is virtually gone in the public, private sector, excuse me, and I were to say to you, we're going to defer what would amount to about twenty, twenty-five percent of compensation into your retirement benefit plan. Okay. You'd call me crazy, throw me out the door, so why bring you in here to my comp specialist? Even if I made that number four dollars, to where you were on the typical employee, maybe around ten, fifteen percent, you'd still say I'm insane. There's not one of you who would do more than ten percent in deferred compensation for a benefit. You wouldn't do it on a pension plan, you just wouldn't do it. And there's not one business person that you could bring into this room that said, yeah, that sounds reasonable, not one would you find. But yet, you're paying right now, what amounts to, in some cases, fifty percent deferred compensation into, with a ten-dollar-an-hour liability for every hour that someone works. This is totally insane. And it gets to the point where, you know, you'd only end up like your part, where you get rid of all your full-time employees, and therefore you get rid of all your liabilities. So like, how do you allow your employees to have a reasonable contribution for the years that they gave you, so that the whole thing doesn't go down the drain? And quite candidly, four dollars an hour is still too much, but compared to where you're at now, it sounds great. And actually, you can make these numbers work for now. Ten years from now, you might not be able to make these numbers work, but I think you can make these numbers work now.
And to the point you made previously, is the system was constructed when healthcare costs were not nearly what they are now, as a percentage of compensation and pension or healthcare wasn't. Your, the major portion of compensation was your salary, was your wage. And through the years, that's become a smaller percentage of your total comp, and it keeps going every year and every year and every year.
Yeah, your wages have inflated on average three point two percent, medical insurance for the past three years has inflated at nine percent. Now, if you take anything as thick as candy bar and inflate it at three times the rate of inflation, you can't afford to have that.
The pension has been twenty to forty percent increase.
Recently, but fortunately, we had some years worth in the play ball. Now, this is, I think, the struggle. I have to tell you, six-two-six is my recommendation these days, wherever I go. And again, I think if we were putting together a business model, that we couldn't get one business person to agree that that is the model that we should use, but in relation to where you've been and where you need to be, that this is pragmatic dual-bore.
And administratively, how hard is this to you?
Oh, it's really easy, because you have an account for each one of your retirees, and so you know when the account is depleted. And I don't know when he's going to do it, he's got to allow us to set up annuities.
So you will.
Maybe you can convince him.
October two thousand and nine, you write such nice letters, I'm going to take care of this little guy. Two thousand and nine was a little while ago. But John, when they actually have the annuities, you will actually have an account set up.
Right. Every other state has that, right? The Golden.
Those that offer the benefit, I think they do, it's just unexcusable to get.
I think it would be helpful to plug this into the, some of the models that you have. I think Dennis did a model for the finance to S-Force, and see how this changes the OPEPs.
Oh, radically.
Radically, but it'd be good to see what the number is.
Especially if you put that into an annuity.
Because we have the OPEP projections, almost for the next thirty years, of what they're going to cost us, and we pay them as we go. And it'll be interesting to redo that model, incorporating a different model here, and see how those numbers shrink on a annual basis, not just five years down the road, we'll talk about fifteen, twenty years down the road.
Yeah, the only thing that's wrong with the model that you have, that you're using, is it assumes that you can have an annuity, but all of them are written that way.
It assumes that you could, oh, I mean, you could save.
That's everything wrong, that's not what's wrong with your model, first of all, all of them, they're rather doing these.
You know what, the model from the order that, no, but we had a separate one from our budget fund at S-Force, I think they.
I thought they used an annuity assumption also.
I don't know, I will check.
Because I could solve this.
Because Dennis built a labor model, and I think he incorporated healthcare into that. I could be wrong.
I don't recall an annuity, but whatever.
The one that we have to hire out for earlier the year has it, I think the one that the budget fund at S-Force did was more realistic, I believe, but we should check it, so.
Now, the next page, this is going back to what was on the table in November of two thousand and ten. This is where we walked away from it. And these were numbers that Bill Weaver asked me to run. They were never discussed. So these are numbers that Bill asked me to run, I ran them in November, and they were never discussed. Now, what this has, and I break this, so this is all retirees, that you currently have, in the suit, their formula changes. And as you can see here, it's graduated based on your minimum of fifteen, which was required under the current policy, and goes all the way up to somebody who's with me for three to five years.
Oh, I'm sorry. So wait a minute, so aren't we at twenty years now? So isn't fifteen, nineteen?
No, you have people that have retired with less than twenty years.
Oh, these, I'm sorry, we're on retirees, we're not.
That starts at fifteen.
I think she was just being replaced then.
Yes, some people that retired.
Years back.
And they fill out.
Did you look at, did you look at the list of people that this relates to? No, so we didn't retire.
No, Bill said, what would it look like if we used this?
Oh.
There's no setting. Bill said, give me a graduated fifteen to fifty-five. Bill said, "Give me a graduated 15 to 35." And quite candidly, there's no way of applying to it, it just takes 2% increments against There, as long as you stay with NISHIP, there is a floor you can't go below, as long as you're with NISHIP. And that is 50% on the individual, 35% on the family. So this doesn't go below that floor. So this would take a bit of an analysis, and how many current retirees are there? You have to guess.
Probably 40 to 50.
Yeah, so this would have to be an analysis of looking at those individuals to see what they're contributing now on the policy, and then how it would affect them against this.
We're talking the police also?
Yeah.
All?
No, actually, for the purposes of this analysis, it would be nine units.
Oh, well, right, so it's far less.
Yeah. The last workshop, I made it very, very clear, and I'm just going to repeat it, because this is so important. As far as changing the benefits for an employee who's never covered by a collective bargaining agreement, the courts are very clear that the then-current town board can do anything once. Change, or then they move around, so, for example, those elected officials that we fired before you have the benefit, the current town board can say, "Gone, gone tomorrow." And there's no recourse. And the courts are very, there's a recent court case even last year, totally consistent. Now, when it comes to those people who retired under a labor contract, where the labor contract was silent on retiree medical, same thing, whatever the board wants to do. If you retired under the labor contract, and the labor contract was not silent, but actually addressed the benefit, then it is well-understood that for an employee who retired under that particular contract, for the life of that contract, is guaranteed what was under that contract. So I have a labor contract that goes from 2010 to 2013, and I retire this year, what's my retirement medical, whatever that contract says. Now, when the contract gets renegotiated, I'm no longer under that contract. You know, I have the same language. I'm under the contract, I'm not raising my union, I'm not under the contract, what's my benefit? And here's where the courts are not being consistent. There's an argument where I have now this contract, it's like all those other employees that retired where there was no contract, the contract was silent. I'm now doing it with the veteran board. But some retirees are taking that old provision to court, saying there's a breach of contract. And they took it to court under Article 78. Union couldn't have any activity, they had the jurisdiction, so they took themselves as a breach of contract under Article 78. Now, as I applied in my desk, when I went to court now and studied legal law, we learned that there's no such thing as a third-party beneficiary of a collective bargaining, it's not under public contract. It's a collective bargaining, there's no third-party beneficiary, it's only the court or the union. Well, there's five courts in the state of New York that said that they don't have third-party beneficiary of the contract, and there is a breach of contract, therefore it has to be whatever it was.
At the time of retirement.
Under that older contract. Now, one court said, "Well, that doesn't mean that they still get the kinetic agenda plan that was in effect in year 1980, because that contract was round." You get rid of the benefit. Well, you say, "Well, Judge, what is it?" I mean, so the judges have all been saying, "There are exceptions to what you're getting." But these cases have not made it where the court appeals, and so we're still shrugging our shoulders. Some municipalities are making new liable modifications, not eliminations, but modifications. They're changing the plan, they're changing the premium contribution, they're changing the deductives, they're changing a few things here and there, and they're going ahead with it, and in some cases, they're even stopping it. And the last time I asked some people that are really on top of this whole issue, it's not even on the thought. We don't even know if court appeals to it. Why not go for another two years? So my recommendation to most of my clients is how you treat the current employees under the labor contract, you can negotiate. For those who retired as a pre-determined contract, you might want to make some changes in the plan design, maybe even on the employee contribution, be sensible. And then, of course, when you're going to people who retired, that have no protection, I think it's just a matter of if they be sustainable. I mean, you could go back and recalculate.
So there's no broad base on 2018?
Other than Bill asking me to run some numbers?
Yeah. I mean, did you, are we actually looking at numbers of employees in specific buckets or anything like that? So this doesn't, you know, so we don't know what's the actual impact of doing any of this. So we, this we definitely should look at with real bodies and...
Yeah, if that's where you want to go, because quite candidly, if we're for this non-union group of people, you go through on your already-retireds and say, "I'm going to give you $4 an hour where I already can work for you," and...
Or you could go back to that, right, okay. Well, you could, you could look at both and see what...
Now, what that might mean is you might ask some retirees whose bucket money is gone, and then you turn off the medical insurance. You could ask some retirees who have only been paying 15%, that are going to pay 40%.
And what were these people under 20 years of service paying prior to, in the existing policy?
You have some employees, my guess is, could upper tell, it's in the comparison sheet.
On the comparison, it says that current 20 years service, you can say 70%, and then you did this grad, graduated kind of...
Yeah, that would be for past retirees.
Right.
Or, no, I should say that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I see it here, 60%. Okay.
The graduated schedule is for current retirees, the $4 an hour is for future retirees. Now, here's the reality check. Your future retirees, you'll start picking them up now, over time. But if you have 40 individuals that are sitting there with 400 to 600,000 dollar liabilities to the taxpayer, it's a huge drain. Another client of mine here in Westchester County has now calculated that 30% of his entire medical insurance bill is going to retirees.
We think ours is at least that, maybe more.
And again, it's a tough decision, people react very, very harshly to it, but it's not a matter of eliminating, it's a matter of getting it so it's sustainable, because otherwise, there may come a day where you turn it off. How you explain that to people is not an easy task. Your task force has given their recommendations on this, I've been giving my recommendations on it for as long as I've been here, something radical has got to be done to retire your medical insurance in order to keep the benefit.
In order to sustain it.
And for you, it's a tough one, because you're coming across, "I'm doing what's necessary to keep this thing alive." You're doing what you feel is in the best interest of everybody, but for the receiver, the person that receives it, it's the cut. And they don't mind?
Well, potentially, but they may not need it all.
Yeah.
So... It's probably, it's probably one of the harder decisions that you make on all of the folks here. So how would you like to proceed from here? There's, there were two things that we needed to look at as far as the sick leave whatever you pay out. Breathing. That's not really looking at something, that's just making a decision. And I think the one analysis would have to be made, it's like you get together a panel and a controller, and those numbers are... But can you give me any direction? Do you want to use some sort of graduated scale for their current retirees? Or do you want to get over to some sort of...
I think we need to put some real people in there, plug in and see what we get, don't you think so?
Yeah.
Run a spreadsheet, really put some people in there, and then discuss it with, I think Steve, I think CPA should definitely be involved in the discussion.
Again, I mean, none of this is in the realm of confidential, not with the struggle sheets.
What do you think?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. We have to see in real terms of people and savings and costs and impact, of course.
Now, this should have, as far as our work, it should be able to be short-term around, because we're looking at a population of 40.
Right.
Doesn't take a lot of time. What's the timeline for you?
Want to do an executive session?
We've got a question, there's an executive session already, we'll be able to have another, just give them another one.
I would, well, you can be talking about the specific people, too.
Yeah, because we can talk about people and what they make and salaries. An executive session, I think, is, if you think you could fit it in, whatever.
Well, no, we can fit it in next week.
Not this, not this one. I would like to put a deadline, shoot for April 1st, and see if we can get some numbers done.
I think the only thing that you really need to go here, I mentioned this in my transmission email, the employer practices compliance manual recommendation, was that perhaps I would sit down with the supervisor for a page term, and if there's anything that you felt needed to go back on before you would, because quite candid, other than your family medical leave policy, this is...
Quote, like, yeah.
Best practice. And your family medical leave policy, I must say, is the standard, and I mean, it's the 99% standard, but it's very different than what you're doing now.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.